Good evening. It is 6:30 on Wednesday, February 19, 2025. This is a regular meeting of the Harpswell Planning Board. I'm calling us to order, and I'd like to ask Dan if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My chair just turned on its own. Yes, we have a witness.
I had the same issue.
All right, we have one item on the agenda tonight, and that is all business. It's an item-- Yes, I'm reviewing the agenda. Pledge of Allegiance and review agenda. Thank you, my assistant right there. I really appreciate that. We have one item on the agenda, and it's an item of all business. Before we get to the agenda, I would like to declare a quorum and have the board and staff introduce themselves, beginning with our probably soon-to-be-absent board member.
Matt Gilli from Cundys Harbor.
Courtney Snellings from Oars Island.
Amy Heibel Harpswell.
Dan Hopek, Oars Island.
Lori Rice, Great Island.
Christine Donovan Hall, Oars Island.
And I'm Margaret McIntyre, the interim town planner.
Thank you. Just to note, we also have the town attorney on Zoom, which we are very grateful for. So, let's see.
You need to, sorry to interrupt, declare one of these guys a voting member.
Yes, yes.
We should let Matt do it.
Let Matt, let Matt do it. We should let Matt do it, because he probably won't be able to do it again. Thank you very much. That was very generous.
I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Okay, all right. So we have a quorum, and Matt Gilli is going to be our other voting member. So I'm going to just describe this application very, very briefly, and then I'm going to ask the applicant if he would like to speak to the board. This is, as I said, this is probably the third time this has been before the board. So the owner of the lot, map 7, Lot 151, is Lawrence Hegarty and Vivian Gueye. They live on High Head Road. The property is currently developed with a one-unit residential structure and a one-unit accessory dwelling over the garage. The lot is on just over one acre of land with about 300 feet of shore frontage on Mingo Cove. The applicants are proposing to develop a non-commercial wharf for their private use. The proposed facility will consist of a dock, or is proposed to be a dock that measures six feet wide by 40 feet long and will connect to a three-foot wide by 40-foot-long seasonal ramp and a 10-foot-by-20-foot seasonal float. So that is a brief description of the proposal, and I'd like to open it to the applicant to come and speak to the board if he would like at this time.
Could I speak after the vote?
After the vote?
Yeah.
If you'd like us to take the vote first, we would be happy to do that, but I want to give you a chance to speak before we vote.
I don't think I have to say now. If you have to the vote, I'll say.
Okay, all right. The applicant is asking the board to do its business first. We have before us a letter from the applicant's attorney, and we also have a letter from the town attorney. I hope that everybody's had a chance to read it. Those came in pretty late today. I'm going to turn it over to the acting town planner, who I presume is going to ask the town attorney to explain her memo. But let's do that. Then we'll have the board ask any questions that it wants to, and then we can go through the findings of fact and take a vote.
Yes, I think that it's probably more appropriate to turn it over to the town attorney. We didn't get this, we got this pretty recently, so I haven't had a ton of time to review it. So I think it's probably in the town attorney, Amy Chow's hands, if she has anything she'd like to say.
Okay, Ms. Chow, we're listening to you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for excusing my school-vacation appearance. I screened in on two wheels after my daughter's high school states in Nordic skiing. So I'm still in post-skiing garb, and I apologize for that.
We're happy to get you any way we can.
And forgive me while I get my letter up, but I can, let's see. So, as I understand it, this has been before the board a number of times. And I think, if I understand the questions, they are mostly related to whether or not Section 15.3.9 of the town's Shoreland Zoning Ordinance applies to this application. And so I'd like to focus on that. And I will, let's see, now I can't see the board. Oh, here we go. Can you, can you all see me? Okay?
Yeah.
I can see you.
We can see you, we can hear you.
Yeah.
All right. As I understand it, the lot at issue, which is lot, used to be named Lot 36 out of about 70 lots in the High Head development or High Head subdivision, that is the lot that the applicant is proposing to put a private residential dock on. And 15.3.9 of the Shoreland Zoning Ordinance provides that no new wharf, pier, dock, and/or float shall be constructed on a lot shown on a recorded subdivision plan that has deeded rights of access to a wharf, pier, dock, and/or float. That section goes on to say some other things that I don't think are really relevant here. I think that is mostly the relevant part of 15.3.9. And I have read, I know that the town planner did put together, you know, a memo a little while back. And I also have read the applicant's attorney's letter. And I think the question is, what is a recorded subdivision plan under 15.3.9? That is really the question. And also, what is that section, Section 15.3.9, intended to get at? What was the purpose of adopting these community dock provisions that your town adopted back in 2007? So I'd like to, so if 15.3.9 does apply to this application, I think that the planning board could reasonably deny the application, because there is, in fact, a community dock, under the definition of the community dock in the ordinance, that serves all of the lots in the High Head subdivision. And also, there are required requirements in the nature of covenants that you will see attached to my memo that make it clear that every lot owner who bought a lot within High Head is required to also have shares in the High Head Yacht Club. And for that privilege, every lot owner is required to pay an assessment that would allow, give them and their immediate family members the privileges to use the amenities at the yacht club, which include the clubhouse, and includes a wharf, and some other amenities that are associated with the, with the community dock. So the question is whether 15.3.9 applies to this particular lot, which is a lot within, admittedly, an old subdivision, but a subdivision nonetheless. So what I thought I would do is just go over a little bit of what I dug up with Margaret's help and Christie's help. When the ordinance amendments with respect to community docks went into effect, and what appears, based on the changes in those that went into your various ordinances, what it appears that the town was attempting to do here. It looks like in 2007, the town adopted a new definition of community dock, which you can all look at in your definitions addendum. But clearly, community docks were described as docks that would serve lots within a subdivision. And it was a single-wharf pier dock and float located on a lot in a subdivision, approved by the planning board, and having a common right of use by the Association of Homeowners, having common rights of interest in the lot, and which is used by the property owners for loading and loading, et cetera. So if you look at the definition of community dock, and then also, 15.3.9 was first adopted in 2007, and it was back then 15.3.8, but it is now 15.3.9. And as well, in 2007, the subdivision ordinance was amended to add a provision, 9.17, which provided that for subdivisions that were located wholly or partially within the shoreline zone, no new wharf or dock could be constructed to service only one of the lots in the subdivision if there were a community dock that could be constructed on land within the subdivision that would serve as many as the subdivision could reasonably accommodate, and a third was used as an example. And so what you have is a number of sections, which, in sort of general parlance, and you'll see this on page 2 of my letter, one of the middle paragraphs. When you look at these amendments, these 2007 amendments as a whole, it looks like two things were going on here. First, because your subdivision ordinance generally applies to, hey, if somebody wants to divide their land and create a subdivision under the law, you are looking at things prospectively, into the future. And so if today you wanted to build a subdivision that was a shorefront subdivision, you would be required, and you wanted to provide, you know, dock access, you would be required, under the ordinance, on a going-forward basis, to apply with these, comply with the community dock requirements. Again, the town was expressing a preference here, I assume, to avoid sort of many little docks that extend into the waters of Harpswell within a subdivision when a common element, such as a community dock, could service all of those lots and do so, you know, as a common amenity. So on a looking-forward basis, it appears that these amendments were attempting to get at subdivisions that would be created in the future. But also, 15.3.9 clearly applies to pre-existing subdivisions that were in existence as of 2007, when that section was adopted. And it appears also that it is saying that, hey, if you are in, if you are a lot within a subdivision and you have a right, as a subdivision lot owner, to a common community dock that serves that subdivision, then you ought not to, under 15.3.9, be able to develop your own private residential dock serving only your lot. And which, so I think the provisions were attempting to address new subdivisions that might come before the planning board, and also pre-existing subdivisions that were in effect as of 2007. Now, the issue that has, that the planner raised and that the attorney for the applicant has raised is whether or not it makes sense to not apply the rule in 15.3.9 that you can't have your own private dock if you're within a subdivision where you have access to a community dock. If you are in an old subdivision, and when I mean old subdivision, I mean prior to September 23, 1971, which is when Maine's current subdivision statute went into effect. And I would submit that, and it is true that your definitions addendum defines subdivision in reference to the current statute, and just simply says, a subdivision is a division of a tract or parcel of land into three or more lots within any five-year period in accordance with 30A MRSAs Section 4401 Sub 4, and as that subsection may be amended from time to time. So the reference to that current subdivision statute, this definition itself in your addendum doesn't refer to any particular date. You have to go into the statute itself to say, oh, by the way, this is a statute that applies to any divisions of land that occurred on or after September 23, 1971. Now, the planner and the applicant's attorney thinks, well, that must mean that the town intended to treat subdivisions that were older than 1971 differently and exempt them from the rule that if you, if you're in an old subdivision and if you have a community dock and rights to a community dock as a lot owner, you are exempt from the rule, and you could also put in your own private residential dock. While I understand the arguments that are being made here that are very technical in nature, I think the better view, and I do admit that, you know, this is a closer call. It's not absolutely clear. And where there's ambiguity, the planning board gets to make a decision here. But I do believe that when you look at all of the amendments as a whole together and look at why it is that you adopted these amendments in 2007, I don't see any indication in legislative history or in any of the language in those amendments that would have you, from a policy or regulatory standpoint, treat subdivisions that were created under an old subdivision statute differently than subdivisions that were created post-1971. It does make sense, if the amendments were adopted in 2007, and you had a subdivision, a pre-existing subdivision, where you already had pre-existing permitted docks, individual docks. In other words, you probably have that situation, correct? Where you have a subdivision that was older than 2007. Maybe it was created in 2000. And maybe the code officer or the planning board at the time may have permitted a, an individual dock, notwithstanding that there was a community dock. Those things do happen. But if the planning board were to receive an application like that today, we would consider those docks, if you will, grandfathered or legally non-conforming docks. And any new application for an individual dock for a pre-existing subdivision arguably should not, should not be allowed, because 15.3.9 prohibits it. So going back to 15.3.9, I think a common sense view of the term, is this a lot or wharf? Hang on, let me go back to the language. No new wharf, pier dock, shall be constructed on a lot shown on a recorded subdivision plan that has deeded rights of access to a dock, meaning a community dock. So in this case, and I think attached to my letter, you'll see Plan Book 70, pages 22 and 23 at the end of my memo. There are, I believe, six or seven plans that go with this flatted-out subdivision that was created in August of 1965 under the old Maine subdivision statute that has existed, was in existence as of 1954. And I did include a copy of that statute for your review. That is what's commonly known as Maine's prior subdivision law. So subdivisions, subdivisions of land did exist, and they didn't just exist, of course. You know, lands get divided all the time. But under the immediately prior law to the 1971 law that is now on the books, you still needed to get municipal approval of a subdivision of land. And in fact, that's what this is. What you'll see is, I think my plan shows that the municipal officers, the select board, three selectmen, signed the, signed the plan. It's in the upper-left-hand corner. And the statute at the time also required that this plan, showing these lots, lotted out, should be recorded in the registry. And you can see in the lower-right corner that, in fact, it was recorded in Registry of Deeds in Cumberland County on August 4, 1965. So under a plain reading of 15.3.9, I think you could take the position that this is most certainly a recorded subdivision plan. And if that's so, then the next hurdle I think you have to get over is, were there deeded rights to a community dock? And this one, I think, is also supported. In the memo attached to my memo, which our paralegal did, this is not exhaustive research, but basically what you have is a situation where the High Head Yacht Club lot is on Plan Book 70, page 23, the second page of that plan, as Lot 147. On that lot, it is, you can see, it says High Head Yacht Club. It's next to Lot 37 on the left-hand side. Do you all see that there?
No, I'm not sure.
Let me give, let me give you a moment to get there.
Amy? It's on this page. On the very back. Flip it all the way over. Flip it over.
Oh, okay, got it, got it, got it, got it.
So if you were to marry those two plans, what you would see on the first page, the lot in question is Lot 36. And you can see, you can see the words "Mingo Cove" directly above it. And it kind of dips in. Do you see, do you see Lot 36?
Maybe on the other side.
No, I'm sorry, Amy. Amy, I'm sorry. It was confusing. The very first, the very first land, go there first. I apologize. I sent you to the wrong place. So if you see the words "Mingo Cove" kind of in the upper-right-ish corner, go down directly from that, and you'll see 36. Lot 36 is the lot in question before you today. That is the Hegarty-Gueye lot. And that is the lot that the applicant is seeking to put a private residential dock on. Now, now do go to the second page of the plan. And what you'll see is, if you were to go, if you were to marry those two, you would just go, literally, you would skip Lot 37, and you would be at the High Head Yacht Club lot.
Yeah.
Follow me? So, so this lot is not even distant from the High Head Yacht Club lot and the High Head Yacht Club community dock, which the lot owner has rights to and also actually is required to have shares in the High Head Yacht Club and required to pay assessments. And so if you look at the, and you don't have to go here now, but in the highlighted section, if you got it in color, of the memo that Ms. Fryer, our paralegal, did, you'll see that the shareholders in High Head Yacht Club are shareholders by virtue of their ownership of their lot. And that, that is the arrangement that was made. This was all made, by the way, in 1965, when this entire subdivision was being created and developed. So you had a, you had a yacht club lot, which was essentially a common element for all 70 lots. And every lot owner had to buy, you know, by virtue of owning a lot, had shares in the yacht club proportionate to, you know, their ownership. And lot owners in perpetuity are to remain members in good standing of the High Head Yacht Club, which would in turn give them the benefit of using, among the other amenities at the yacht club, the community wharf that exists today and has long existed at High Head. So I think when you look at 15.3.9 as a whole, I think there is a reasonable interpretation that it does, in fact, apply to this application, because you have a lot on a recorded subdivision plan, albeit it is on an old subdivision plan, but it is a subdivision plan nonetheless. And then you also have, certainly when you look at the rights and covenants in the history, you have a community dock that serves all of the lots in the High Head subdivision. There are a few other points I could make, but I think I should stop there and see if there are any, any questions.
It was pretty clear. Board, have any questions?
Yeah, just one. Yeah, thank you. That was, that was very well described. My question has to do, and I don't think it was, you mentioned something very briefly. I'd like you to go into a little more detail about other property owners within this subdivision who were granted docks.
Yeah, and I, so I don't know that to be the case. I think I, I think I've been told that that is, that is the case.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I don't know when those docks were, when those permits were granted. And those were, I assume, for permanent wharfs, you know, with temporary floats and ramps, right? That's, that's kind of the system in this area of Harpswell, right?
Yes.
And so certainly, the interpretation that I've just gone through would not impact them, meaning they would be, quote, grandfathered, in the sense that even though 15.3.9 says, hey, you can't have, you can't build a dock here if you have rights to a community dock, that ship has already sailed with respect to individual lot owners who have already obtained their permits for those wharfs. But, but I do think if some, as the current applicant has come before you, you know, it's up to the planning board to apply the ordinance. And I, and I think I've given you a way to apply the ordinance. You can also consider the applicant's attorney's arguments as well. But I don't, I think the fact that there may be some, a handful of private residential docks serving only single lots within this subdivision that may have been granted, the fact that that may have happened in the past wouldn't, in my opinion, be a reason why you have to continue to do that in the future under the plain kind of meaning of, of 15.3.9.
Thank you. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. In fact, I would think it would be, it would set a precedent that would probably really confuse and complicate things in the future. And I just had one other question. If one of those docks on a private resident had, was wiped away in a storm, and they didn't rebuild for a year, would the planning board be required to allow them to rebuild?
That's an interesting question.
That's a great question. I'm thinking of the non-conformity language in the shoreline zone, and I think, and the reason I'm pausing is if, if the wharf system itself were to be completely removed, you, as you know, have a threshold of, is it a greater than 50% of the assessed value removal? Or is it less than that? Let's say you've got the storm of the century, and the entire wharf is obliterated. We know that if we talked about homes and structures like that, the standard that would apply is you need to move it to be more compliant or more conforming to the greatest practical extent. Query weather, if you have a wharf system, you can move that back and, you know, any more than it already is. And I haven't really thought about that deeply, but I tend to think that a wharf is a wharf. It is sort of a functionally water-dependent use. So the notion of moving a residence back out of the resource is one thing. But a wharf needs to be in, in the resource in order to do its job.
My question was also, if they, for some reason, were unable or chose not to rebuild within one year, could, could they then petition the board and demand that the board grant them a new permit?
Well, there are a lot of sort of speculative hypotheticals here, and I would say if an applicant comes before you, you've got to apply 15.3.9 as, under a plain reading of that. And so I think, Margaret, are there, is it a year-- And so, I think, Margaret, are there, is it a year that you have? I'm trying to remember.
It depends on if it's more or less, more or less than 50% damage. If it's less than 50% damage, you get 18 months. If it's more, you get a year. But I would just like to say that that provision in the ordinance specifically is about any non, it says any non-conforming, this is 10.3.2.2 in the Shoreland Zoning Ordinance, any non-conforming structure that's located less than the required setback from a water body, stream, tributary stream, coastal wetland, freshwater wetland, or from a property line. So, it's specifically about setbacks, not about uses. So, I think that it's an even more complicated question than even you're asking.
Okay. All right. I thought it was, I thought it was an interesting point to raise.
Because I don't know that this would even take into account.
My sense.
That it's a non-conforming.
And I could be wrong about this, but my sense would be if an owner chose not to rebuild within that one-year period, they would have to come before the board with a new application and would not have standing to rebuild. That's my, I'm not a lawyer, but that's my experience with that kind of thing. But it's not really pertinent to the discussion today, so I won't press the point, but I thought it would be interesting.
I don't think the one-year provision, even reading this, I don't think the one-year provision would apply at all.
Okay. All right.
Because that would just be for a non-conforming from the setback, but it's conforming in the way that it's a functionally water-dependent structure.
Okay. All right. Interesting.
Good question, though.
Okay. Does the board have, again, does the board have any other questions that they want to ask?
Well, I think this gives us some good guidance going forward as well, that we're, that when we do get applications like that, we're not looking at a magical date of the new state statute in 1971, but we're looking at whether it was a subdivision and whether there was a community dock built on it. Is that, am I reading you correctly on that?
I think so, yes. I don't think, I think pre-1971 versus post-1971 is not necessarily the correct analysis.
Okay.
Okay.
That's very helpful.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. I don't know if you want to stay on the line. What do you think? Should we keep Amy on the line or?
I don't know if the applicant.
Let her go eat her dinner.
Do you have any questions that you'd like to ask, Amy?
Not at this time.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. That was really, really helpful.
You're very welcome.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too. All right. So, we have draft motions and draft findings that have been prepared. And unless there is further discussion, I just would open up again for the board, any discussion by the board, any, if the applicant wants to say anything. Otherwise, we'll move on to our findings.
Okay.
All right. So, I don't have to read these findings. I'm happy to do that. Dan, if you'd like to read the findings?
I think for purposes of the record, it would be helpful here to read all of them.
Someone has to read them. I just thought you might want to, you might want to take that chore.
I guess. Okay.
Right before you start, is there any necessity to remove this address at the top and change that?
Oh, yes.
For West Cundy's point group.
And the math in lot is wrong, too.
Thank you. Good catch.
Matthew James.
Yeah, I remember that before. Sorry, Dan, I just didn't know.
All right. The applicant's property, and what I'm going to do is I'm going to read all of the sections and the findings, and at the end, ask if those are approved the way they're read. Because there will be findings that sections have been met, and there will be at least one where a finding is that a section has not been met.
Right.
So, we'll do that all at the end. The applicant's property is located in the SR and RP districts. The proposed dock will be located in the RP district. Non-commercial wharves and docks are in allowed use in the RP district, subject to planning board review and approval. Section 15.3 of the Shoreland Zoning Ordinance establishes standards for wharves and docks. I move that the planning board find that the application of Diane Plord representing Hegarty and Gueye for the construction of a non-commercial residential wharf on Lot 7 on map 151 does not meet the requirements of Section 15.3 that are applicable to the application, based on the following findings that are incorporated in this motion by reference. Section 15.3.1, no more than one pier, dock, or for similar structure extending or located below the maximum high water line of a water body or within a wetland is allowed on a single lot. This limit shall not apply to functionally water-related uses, marine-related businesses, commercial fishing activities, and marinas. Finding, this standard is met based on the finding that the applicant is proposing to construct a non-commercial residential wharf slash dock on a lot that does not currently have a dock. Therefore, there will be one dock on the lot. 15.3.2, access from shore shall be developed on soils appropriate for such use and constructed so as to control erosion. Finding, access to the dock will be from the upland, utilizing a portion of an existing path. Pedestrian access will be over lawn and through a small stand of trees. This standard is met since the removal of vegetation and disturbance of the upland will be minimized. Only hazard trees are proposed to be removed. Section 15.3.3, the location shall not interfere with existing developed or natural beach areas. Finding, this standard is met since there is no existing beach area in proximity to the wharf or dock. 15.3.4, the facility shall be located so as to minimize adverse effect on fisheries. Finding, the standard is met since the wharf is positioned to provide reasonable tidal flow around the facility. The ramp and float will be removed and stored outside the coastal wetland in the off-season. The project is being reviewed by both relevant state and federal agencies and will need those permits to be constructed. 15.3.5, the facility shall be no larger in dimension than necessary to carry on the activity and be consistent with the surrounding character and uses of the area. 15.3.5.1, non-commercial private piers and docks and wharves shall have a maximum width of six feet and shall not extend below the low water line, not including ramps and floats. Finding, this standard is met since the pier will be six feet in width and will not extend below the mean water line. The length of the proposed facility is similar to other existing docks on nearby lots. 15.3.6, no new structure shall be built on, over, or abutting a pier, wharf, dock, or other structure extending beyond the maximum high water line of a great pond stream, tributary stream, HAT of the coastal wetlands, or within freshwater wetland described in Section 3 of this ordinance. Commercial fishing structures requiring direct access to the water as an operational necessity are allowed. Finding, this standard is met since no new structures are proposed on the wharf slash dock. 15.3.7, no existing structure built on, over, or abutting a pier, dock, wharf, or other structure extending beyond the maximum high water line of a stream, tributary stream, high annual tide of the coastal wetland, or within a freshwater wetland described in Section 3 of this ordinance, shall be converted to residential dwellings in any district. Finding, this standard is met since no structures are proposed on the wharf slash dock. 15.3.8, except in commercial fisheries, one district, structures built on, over, or abutting a pier, wharf, dock, or other structure extending beyond the maximum high water line of a great pond stream, tributary, high annual tide of the coastal wetland, or within a freshwater wetland described in Section 3 of this ordinance, shall not, and then I lost something.
Should not exceed 20.
Exceed 20 feet in height above the pier, wharf, dock, or other structure. Finding, this standard is met since there are no proposed structures on the wharf slash dock. Thank you. 15.3.9, no new wharf, pier, dock, and/or float shall be constructed on a lot shown on a recorded subdivision plan that has deeded rights of access to a wharf, pier, dock, and/or float, provided, however, that the planning board may authorize a new community dock within that subdivision pursuant to Section 15.2.3 of this ordinance, if the applicant can demonstrate that the new community dock will significantly approve, improve access to a wharf, pier, dock, and/or float for at least one-third of the lots within the subdivision and protect natural resources from overdevelopment. Finding, this standard is not met based on the finding that the owners of the property have access to the High Head Yacht Club facilities. Justification for this finding has been provided by the town attorney in a letter dated February 192025 and entitled 309 High Head Road, colon, Residential Dock Application. This letter is incorporated here and by reference. 15.3.10, new permanent piers and docks in non-tidal waters shall not be allowed unless it is clearly demonstrated to the planning board that a temporary pier or dock is not feasible and a permit has been obtained from the Department of Environmental Protection pursuant to the Natural Resources Protection Act pursuant to, pursuant to the, yeah, Section 38 MRSA, Section 480-C, and may, as may be amended from time to time. Finding, this standard is met based on the finding that the application is for a dock located on tidal waters. 15.3.11, vegetation may be removed in excess of the standards of 15.15 of this ordinance in order to conduct shoreline stabilization of an eroding shoreline, provided that a permit is obtained from the code enforcement officer. Construction equipment must access the shoreline by barge when feasible, as determined by the code enforcement officer. Subsection 1, when necessary, the removal of trees and other vegetation to allow for construction equipment to access the stabilization site via land must be limited to no more than 12 feet in width. When the stabilization project is complete, the construction equipment accessway must be restored. Subsection 2, revegetation must be in accordance with Section 15.2.7. Finding, this standard is met since the applicant does not propose to remove vegetation in excess of the standards of 15.15 or in excess of the width of the dock. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? I do have one thing to note here. As part of the discussion, the reason why I went through the detail of reading each of the sections and each of the findings is that the decision of this board is always appealable. And should it end up in court, for example, and the judge were to take a look at this and say that the opinion of our town attorney is incorrect, and that the opinion of the attorney for the applicant is correct, there are sufficient findings now where the judge could say, would not have to remand it, but could say, all of the other requirements that were set forth in the ordinance have been met. That's the reason for setting out all of these specific findings.
Thank you.
Dan, you said the finding that's not met?
Yes.
The end of your sentence was, this letter is incorporated by reference. Is that what you said?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero. Action on the application conclusions of law. I move that in light of these facts, with consideration given to the supporting documentation and the record, that the planning board reaches the following conclusions. The planning board finds that the applicants, Lawrence Hegarty and Diane Plord, have not met the standards of the Town of Harpswell Shoreland Zoning, Shoreland Zoning Ordinance for the installation of a dock in the Resource Protection District. The planning board denies the application. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Really appreciate it. It's always great to have a legal mind on the planning board.
Could you order a speaker?
Would you like to speak? Would you, we have?
I'm Lawrence Hegarty, the applicant, and all that I wanted to say is I'm disappointed in the finding, and I'll consider what possible next steps I might take.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you. That is totally within your rights, and thank you for coming tonight. I understand your disappointment.
Yeah, and we have established a record so that you have a basis on which to take whatever action you may decide to take.
Yeah.
And I'll get you a notice of decision. I'll get you a copy of the notice of decision as soon as possible. You're welcome.
All right. That was the main item on the agenda for tonight. And again, thank Dan for reading through that. I don't have any new business. Does the planner have any new business?
Oh, yes, I have some things to talk about. We haven't talked in a while.
Thank you.
Didn't we just talk last week?
Thank you.
We haven't had a meeting where we, where everybody's been together in a while. So, I have a couple things to talk about. First, this is, everybody can take one of these, just for reference, they're in your planning board books, but I want to talk about them.
There you go.
It's your term limit, or your, when your term expires. I wanted to talk about this because there's three people with their terms expiring this year. One is Christine. She's an alternate. Her term expires every year. Matt is also an alternate whose term expires every year, so they have to reapply. And the other one is Howard, who's not here. Matt's not running again, so.
You need.
No.
Hey, how do you know? If I lose, I'm going to run again.
Oh, yeah, of course. If you lose. Assuming that Matt is successful.
I haven't seen much of a writing campaign.
No, not yet. But there's time. You never say never.
You never know what's going on behind the scenes.
You never know. It could be secret.
So, this was really geared towards them, but two of them, it's kind of moved, because Howard's not here. But every time that your term is up, you do have to fill out an application. So, Christine has filled out an application, and I'll reach out to Howard, but this is just for, now you guys all know when your term is up. The other thing.
I just want to say something about that, and really appreciate your giving us the heads up on that.
Yeah.
So, if any of you know someone that you think might make a good planning board member? Please.
Assuming that Matt is successful.
Assuming.
We'll have an opening.
Thank you.
And, you know, we should probably get in touch. I will get in touch with Howard and just make sure that he wants to stay on.
Oh, that's my, it's on my to-do list for tomorrow.
Okay.
Because I have to send him his application.
Okay.
I should have someone from another part of town. I always feel really bad when we go down the line, like Oars Island, Oars Island, Oars Island.
I'll see if I can find somebody else in the harbor.
You know.
I'm the only one from the harbor.
Yeah, that would be, that'd be really good.
Lori.
Here's the next one.
Well, I always say Harpswell, and it's not like I'm saying the neck. Harpswell to me is Harpswell. I don't, you know.
You guys are different.
You know what? It's all my town, and I'm proud.
Let's get it, Matt.
The side of that bridge.
I am, I am very happy to be.
They're different villages.
Yeah.
So, this other piece of paper that I have passed out is the Resiliency and Sustainability Committee. Now that I'm the interim town planner, it's one of the committees that I'm the liaison for. I'm learning about them, but one of the things that I have learned, if you look at the back page, it was set up to have one person from each of the nine committees, or whatever. But anyways, there's nobody from the planning board. That's my point. So, I think that originally when this was set up, it was Al, and he quit when he got busy with the comp plan. So, if anybody's interested in joining this committee, they do some really cool stuff. They've got people from all the other committees in town. Right now, they're working on some projects about mapping sea level rise and how it impacts some of the town roads. They do really cool stuff. So, if you're interested, you can tell me now, you can send me an email.
Question.
Yeah.
Who's the number eight? Who's the representative of the commercial fishing industry?
Well, I've only been to one meeting, Matt.
Okay. Sorry.
And I don't know that the. And I don't know that there is. I don't know that there is. I do know Mary Ann, I assume, is the marine resource.
And I know Moes Price, he's stepping down, he said, at the end of April, because I sit on the harbor waterfront.
Yeah.
And he's our representative from there, and he's been nagging one of us from that committee to fill his position, and he hasn't had anybody bite yet. So we may need quite a few people to step up and fill positions-
I think it's-
-in the committee.
And, and all the holes that you're going to leave if you're successful.
Yeah. I'd fill all three of those if I am unsuccessful. I could do the harbor waterfront, the representative of the commercial fishing industry, and the planning board. So if I lose, I can-
You are digging a hole for yourself.
I'm going to shut up. Well, I still have a wife.
I have no idea.
Margaret, I'd be happy to serve as a representative on the planning board unless someone else wants to. Because if someone else wants to, that would be great.
They're doing cool stuff, so I, I think it's super interesting.
I'm thinking about it.
Okay.
And they're, yeah, they come to the, I hear them at the town meeting, too.
They meet at 4:00 PM on Tuesdays.
Tell me.
I believe. No, once a month. Once a month. But last night, you can watch their meeting from last night. They did kind of a kickoff meeting for some of the, the engineering studies that have been done. Let me look at the town calendar.
All right. So Lori, or Lori, would you let, would you let us know?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Okay.
Well, if anything, you could do the planning board. I could be the older adult community.
You could be the, the older adult community. Okay. I, I think we could both qualify.
Oh, I see it.
So, yeah, the first Tuesday, they met the first Tuesday of the month at 4:00 PM.
Where's the-
Yeah.
Where's the representative for the younger adult community?
Let me know, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
What do we suck?
And then the last thing I really needed to talk to you guys about was, I got in tough touch with Jeff Kalinic, the, the state shoreline zoning coordinator from the DEP, and he is interested in doing a training with us. I told him we are specifically interested in wetlands, coastal wetlands, freshwater wetlands. You know, forested wetlands. I put that on there. And then talking about resource protection and kind of a workshop about our map, our shoreline zoning map, and, and if he has any ideas, or we can talk to him about it.
Yeah.
So he is free, and I also invited Conservation Commission, because they wanted to come.
Yeah.
Can the select board come to that?
Anybody can come.
Okay.
Yeah.
I ask, because it does sound interesting, and I may not be on either of them.
You can always be part of the public, you know, anytime you want to be.
Yeah, that's-
Yeah, yeah.
That's a valid point.
Yeah. It's just, I feel like wetlands, the more you talk about them, the more you realize that everybody's a little confused, especially who regulates them, how are they regulated, what's the history of their regulation, and what are we supposed to do on a municipal level?
And who determines them?
Yeah.
I find interesting, too, that who gets to be the one that decides?
And who has to spend the money-
Yeah.
-to decide. That's a great, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it would. That will be interesting.
Yeah. So he is free. He told me he could do the month, in March, the week of the third or the week of the 10th. So that would be, and I'll tell you that the planning board, the Conservation Commission wanted the week of the 10th, because it's after town meeting.
So we're looking at the 5th?
It'd be the, they, they recommended the 11th, 12th, or 13th.
Oh, okay.
And he's available only in the morning or early afternoon, which is really unfortunate for a lot of us, but-
Early in the morning. I'll be that guy.
But it, either way, it will be streamed. It'll be recorded, so you can watch it if you can't make it, but that's all the time he gave me.
I cannot do the 13th.
When you say early morning, what's that?
Oh, not early, just in the morning, or early afternoon.
I thought we were talking like 5:00, 6:00. Listen to everyone.
Any of those days, except the 13th works for me.
All right. So it worked better for Mary Ann on the 11th in the morning.
That's Tuesday?
Yeah.
That works, that works for me.
I know people work.
Tuesday, at what time?
Okay. She wanted the morning, so I'll check in with Jeff and see what time.
Okay.
Works for him. Amy, are you free then?
I am. Yeah. And what's Jeff's last name?
Kalinic. It's K-A-L-I-N-I-C-H.
Okay. You let me know. I'll, I'll bring, I'll go to, I'll go to Itty Bitty and get us some-
Ooh, treats.
Coffee cakes.
I didn't realize that daylight savings was coming this morning.
All right. All right. So I'll follow up with Conservation and with you guys, and send out an agenda and everything, because it'll be a real live meeting. I think it'll be-
At what time?
I don't know. I had to figure out the dates first before I figure out the time.
A better way.
And that is all that I have.
Oh, we have the minutes.
Yeah.
That's the only thing we have left, right?
All right. So is that your planner's update, too?
That is the planner's update.
Okay.
It's all the business.
Look at you. You combined them into one. Well done. Full-time cashier.
Saving. Well, I've been saving up all this stuff to talk about for a while, because we haven't, we haven't met as a group.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the minutes.
You're also code enforcement.
Yeah.
I honestly don't know how you're managing.
It's been both, both departments have been relatively quiet. You know, we haven't had any new-
Right now.
Yeah. There hasn't been a new planning board application, for instance.
This is usually a pretty slow time for the planning board. I mean, this is my first year, so I'm learning, but usually winter is pretty slow for you.
It can be. It can be busy, too, because people are getting ready for the spring sometimes.
Yeah, I, I could, March, April, I bet stuff starts to ramp up again.
Slapbox would be a little challenging right now with snow loads.
Yeah, that is true.
Yeah.
Any, any news on hiring a full-time planner? What's?
No, I haven't heard anything. Everyone in the town office is really preoccupied with town meeting.
Yeah, that's probably true.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a very, very busy time.
I think it's time to stop calling you acting or interim.
Interim.
Yeah, it's time.
Just get rid of the word. Just say it. Just say that word.
I think that we had discussed like a six-month timeframe-
Oh, okay.
-to revisit it.
Okay. All right. How about hiring a codes officer?
I think they're working on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cool. All right.
I think the first, the first order of business was hiring a new clerk, because Jill's retiring, so Tracy's moving to, is running for Jill's position.
Right.
Yeah. But that'll be on the select board meeting tomorrow.
All right. I saw the minutes from December 17th, but I did not read them. Did anybody read them? Okay. Can we do that next time?
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
Yep. And Jim is taking over doing our minutes from now on, so he'll do all the rest of the meetings.
Thank you very much, Jim. Thank you. It's great to have you on board.
Yes, it is.
Very good. All right. Any other business before we adjourn? All right. I declare us adjourned.